Department Chairs, Vice Dean and the Dean. Welcome to the first town hall student meeting of School of Sciences and Humanities. My name is Akher Kaya Sobekova and I'll be hosting today's meeting. The main purpose of the town hall meeting once again is to discuss your study and learning experience during the spring 2021 semester. During this meeting, you are welcome to address your thoughts, questions, suggestions, complaints about online studying directly to the dean, vice dean and department chairs or the program directors as well as the professors. Once you are willing to ask the question, please raise your hand and you can announce your question to the audience. The other option is to type your questions on the Q and A chart located at the bottom of the screen. I see it on the right bottom and our department chairs, vice dean or dean will be glad to reply to your questions by my moderation. I think if everybody is okay, uh, we can, I can just start introducing the participants of today's panel sessions. Okay, let me start with Daniel Pugh, the dean of School of Sciences and Humanities. I think it's best if the professors could just wave so that we don't take a lot of time on that. The next is Philip Enz, Vice Dean of Academic Affairs. Alexei Trochev, Chair of Political Science and International Relations Department and Graduate Program Director and Associate Professor. Andrey Filchenko, Chair of the Department of Languages, Linguistics and Literatures and also Professor. Julia Secha, Acting Chair of Economics Department, Professor. Next, I see Gavin Slate, Chair of the Sociology and Anthropology Department, Associate Professor. Zikrit Van Dufel, Chair of History, Philosophy and Religious Studies Department, Associate Professor. Vasily N. Paulov, Chair of Ministry Department, Professor. Christian Schombach, Chair of Biological Sciences Department, Professor. Anton D. Siednikov, Chair of Physics Department, Professor. Domi Wei, Chair of Mathematics Department. Yula Shamiluklo, Chair of Department of Kazakh Languages and Turkic Studies. Hi. PhD Innovation Studies Program Director and also our professor. Keri Pechinsky, Director of Writing Center. Eliot Bowen, Bowen, I'm sorry, Assistant Professor of History, Philosophy and Religious Studies Department. Kalia Sagandekva, Assistant Professor of Economics Department. Danova Zarkulova, Assistant Professor of Economics Department. Kristina Pugh, Instructor of Sociology and Anthropology Department. Inhan Lee, Assistant Professor of Department of the Mathematics. Daniel Mala Farina, Physics Undergraduate Program Director and Associate Professor as well. Eva Maria Dubois-Song, Assistant Professor of the Department of Languages, Linguistics and Literatures. Gabriel McGuire, Assistant Professor of the Department of Languages, Linguistics and Literatures as well. And finally, Haiyan Juan, Associate Professor of Department of Chemistry of our university. So welcome, welcome all the panelists and thank you for joining us this meeting once again with students. So before the start of the panel session, I think I would like to give a floor for speech to Daniel Pugh, Dean of the School of Sciences and Humanities. Professor Pugh, the floor is yours.
Great, thank you, okay, okay, very much for that and thanks to all my colleagues for joining us today and spending time here to, so that we can reach out to the students. So for, for the students, I want to say, say welcome to 2021. Thank you all for taking time to come here tonight. I know you've, you've probably been through several hours of Zoom already today and it's not necessarily fun to, to take another hour or two of your life to do it and I really do appreciate that we can, can meet here. Of course, we, we all wish we could meet in person. It would be much better if we could see each other regularly and I could run into you in the hallway and we could share our ideas that way. But realizing just how hard it is to, to communicate this semester. I really wanted to get everyone here so that we could, could hear from you so that you can hear from us and maybe we can come up with some new ideas. It's, uh, we'll do this again, I think later in the semester. It's not the, the perfect, um, the perfect way to, to do this, but it's better than, it's what we've got right now. It's better than nothing. Uh, I know, uh, it's, it's going to be frustrating and I want to tell you upfront that we don't have answers to all of your questions. Because a lot of the answers really are that we still have to wait and see what happens with the virus. Uh, but we'll, we'll tell you everything we possibly can. We'll try to be as honest with you as we possibly can. Um, and that means that sometimes we're going to give you information you don't want to hear. Uh, so I'm sorry about that, uh, but I do want to make sure that, that things are as clear as possible. Before we get started, I'll say that, um, I, I do want to congratulate you all, um, everyone here, faculty, staff and students for getting through the fall 2020 semester. It was historic. It was, uh, that doesn't always mean it's fun. It doesn't always mean it's exciting, but it was absolutely a semester that, that we are not going to forget. And that will, will be part of how we remember this university for a long time. Um, and as unpleasant as it was in many ways, as difficult as it was, I, I'm really proud of everyone and how well we managed to get through it. To be honest, it's just the fact that we did it, just the fact that we had a semester. We, we had classes, uh, we, we taught all of our classes. You learned ever in all of your classes. And we are here in another semester, I think is a real testament to the, the spirit of Nazarbayev University students, faculty and staff. It's a, it's a real, um, example of how, um, I think we're all prepared for that VUCA world that our president, President Katsu loves to talk about. If you haven't, if you're a freshman and you haven't heard him talk about that yet, it's one of his favorite things to talk about how the world is volatile, unpredictable, changing and ambiguous or something. It's, uh, the point is that you can't predict what's going to happen in the world around you and you have to be prepared for it. So I think this semester is a good example of that. And I think it's also, you know, it's instructive. It's gonna, we all are going to take lessons out of last semester, uh, moving on. Spring 2021 that we are in now, um, it's going to be a challenge. Really, again, to be really honest, I don't want anyone to, to think that we're going into an easy three and a half, four months ahead of us. It's going to be difficult again. But I think that, that it's also going to be, be better. I think we're constantly learning, we're constantly moving forward. Your faculty have been, been talking to each other a lot over the last several months and we've learned a lot. Almost nobody in the faculty, almost nobody in any faculty had experience with real online teaching before last semester. And your, your professors have done what professors do, which is to study and research and share ideas and learn from each other. Um, and I think we've got a lot of new, um, new approaches and refined approaches going forward. So I think that's going to be good. And I, I think we can do this, I think we will do this because we're in it together. There are some reasons for real optimism for this semester. The first is what I've just said, you know, we're, we're here, we're together and we, we are a community. But also I think the big news of course is the vaccine and we'll talk a little bit more about that. There are multiple vaccines on the market now. The, what we understand is that here in Kazakhstan, um, the Sputnik five vaccine will start to be distributed maybe as early as Monday. So it's happening right away. We're seeing around the world, people are, are getting the vaccines and that's making a difference. And you know, if I could be really, really honest with you, this is the first time, um, in almost a year that I have felt like I see an end in sight, that it feels to me, uh, like there, there is a light at the end of the tunnel, as dim as it is. But we're moving in that direction. So I, I'm going into this semester filled with optimism. I think we're going to finish this semester on a much higher note than we have started it. Hopefully a very high note. Realistically, you know, I do want to say that vaccine is, is not a silver bullet. It's not going to be like a zombie movie where they distribute the, the vaccine, all of a sudden the zombies stop. The disease goes away and everything's perfect. It's going to take a couple of months to get it distributed and then we'll have to see how effective it is. And I think it'll be, you know, it'll, it's going to be a long time before everything is back to something like normal. So, so I don't want to get ahead of myself on all of that. I would say actually, um, really immediately, um, there's a lot of serious cause for caution. Here in Kazakhstan, uh, you, I'm sure you're watching the news. The infection rates are going up daily. We're going into a second surge right now. There were over 1,300 cases reported yesterday in Kazakhstan, um, which is a huge, huge increase over a week previously. And the Ministry of Health is telling us to prepare for a surge coming. They're saying it could keep growing potentially until March. Um, and we, it might still get much, much more severe than it is now. So everyone does need to, to really, um, continue with the precautions and be ready to, to, to sort of stick this out a little bit longer. As we go through all that. So to, to track all of this, I think a lot of you have seen, and if you haven't yet, one of the, the pieces of news is that you'll be, there's a new newsletter that will be distributed to all the students around the country from, um, the, I believe it's going to come out from the president's office, but Department of Student Affairs is helping to coordinate it. It's going to come out weekly to, to explain the situation so that the students have the latest information relevant to them, which I think is good news. Um, and one of the things that you'll see in that letter, uh, is that INU is using a traffic light system. The Ministry of Health has its own traffic light system, uh, red, yellow, green to tell us how severe the, the situation is in the country. Uh, and starting now, the Nazarbayev University out of the, you know, out of the School of Medicine Newsom has its own traffic light system, um, based on the number of cases, the positivity rate, things like that. Right now, INU is inside of what's called the red zone. So we are rated red, which is the most severe situation. In the red zone, uh, according to the INU traffic light system, we have a number of restrictions that we'll talk about a little bit more that we're going to have to follow until we can return to the yellow and eventually, um, to the green zone. We'll talk about that a little bit more. Uh, I'm going to try to answer your questions. We've got department chairs here and advisors and representatives from every department. Uh, I think DSA was going to send a representative, I'm not sure if they came or not. They, I'm sure they'll be here eventually and, um, we have other people around who can answer questions. But this isn't the end of it. You can always follow up, um, with emails, talk to us. However, you can get hold of us as well. So I'm going to start with a couple of the questions that you've already submitted to me. You sent some questions, oh, good, I could see in Texas, as DSA is here, thank you, Kasim Khan for coming. We'll ask you if we have some questions. Several of you submitted questions in the online form that we provided and I'll try to address some of those right off the top before we open it up. So the big question, if I can summarize several of the questions in one way or another. They all say, when will we return? So everyone wants to know, will we have graduation? Will we be meeting for labs? Will we be here for summer? Is INU an online university forever and ever now? The good news is it's not an online university forever. None of us wants that. We're all very, very excited to get back to our classes. But the, the real answer is that, um, we don't know exactly. If I told you for sure, this is the date, everyone will be back in the classrooms, I would be lying. I can tell you that we have, uh, allowed, uh, a slightly larger number of students on the campus this semester than last. We were able to get permission to move a few of the students who needed lab access for graduation. Only the students who must have lab access for graduation, um, back to campus. But it's a very, very small number and honestly, while we're in the red zone, we're restricting lab access. So, uh, that's not really even helping, uh, them very much. I know that other universities in Kazakhstan, that the Ministry of Health has issued, or the, was it Chief Sanitary Doctor? It said that first year students may return to classes. That's a may, not a must. And I can tell you that INU looked at this really closely and made the evaluation that it was too dangerous. That, that getting that many students into the dorms, as we've discussed previously, would be a public health risk and would, it would endanger people. Uh, and so we've made the decision not to do that. Following as we have before, the principle of trying to, to keep the infection rate lowest as our top priority. I can also tell you that what I'm hearing and what we're seeing is that the universities that have started to return students to campus, many of them are already reversing their decisions. So a lot of those students now that the situation is getting worse are having to return home. Um, and so we have, um, I, I think made very much the right decision. Because I think it would be a much more disruptive situation if we were trying to bring people into campus and then sending them home, starting in-person classes and then stopping them. I, I know you will not all agree with me, but I think the right decision is to have a clear decision that we have online classes, uh, until further notice. I'd also note that, that INU's campus is a little bit different than a lot of other campuses in Kazakhstan. Because the, the density of the population on the campus with faculty, staff and students all living together. It's, um, a slightly more difficult public health situation. That said, uh, there were a lot, some questions about graduation. So people want to know, are we going to, are we going to have graduation? Is it going to be in person? All of those things, uh, again, I can't give you a definite answer. I can tell you, we will have graduation, students will graduate this year, that, that's for sure. I can also tell you that, that we really, really want to do it in person. I've been part of some conversations talking about how we can make that work. There's no, no promises yet, there's no, no definite plan. But with the vaccines rolling out now, um, it is a very realistic possibility that we could do an in-person graduation this year. Everybody who attended would have to be vaccinated. We would probably still do some distancing. We would definitely, um, I, I would assume, not definitely, I assume we would have a, a different format. Rather than having 3,000 people stuffed into the, the hall together, maybe we would do some smaller groups. But I know that there's already a group who's talking about what are the creative ways we can do that. So I, for me, that's, that's really a target of trying to get us to a place where maybe we could have graduation. I, I think realistically returning to classes in person before that is very unlikely. We do have some, some sketchy plans for, for that. If, like I say, if the vaccine were to be much more effective and the distribution much more efficient than we expect. And situation changed dramatically, we would try to, to return, um, quickly. But I, I, I think the chances of that are extremely slim. And then, so that brings us to summer and a lot of questions were specifically about summer. Whether or not we can see in person in summer and guess what? This is what the answer is, we don't know yet. I'll tell you where we're planning, we have been doing a lot of our planning this year with the, the hope that we can meet in person in summer. We would, we would very much like to be able to return, obviously as soon as we can in summer. If we are able to return in summer to in-person classes, the priority really is going to be trying to get the students who have missed lab experiences, um, into those labs. So we, we really are going to have a lot of lost ground to make up. So we're going to try to do that. One of the specific questions about summer is whether we will be able to offer a lot of classes in the summer to make up missed time. That is going to be difficult. If we're able to return in person, we'll probably be offering more than usual. But understand that the summer period is, is very limited for us because we have physical limitations on space. We have time limitations because there, it's a compressed semester, so students can't take four or five classes at a time. And to be honest, your, your professors are pretty exhausted too. Those of us who, who are from overseas, most of us haven't, haven't traveled in a year. I haven't seen my family well over a year. And I think that your professors, frankly, are, a lot of them are going to need, if they can, um, to get out for a period. So we are going to, we're going to try to get some classes in the summer. If we can meet in person, we will be prioritizing those lab classes. It's too early to say for sure what can happen. But we can't offer, for example, a, a full, the, the number of seats and classes that we offer in a regular semester. If nothing else, just because of the limits of time, um, that are, that are involved with that. So our, our real priority right now is planning for the fall, for getting ourselves to a place where the fall can be, completely back to normal if possible, uh, as efficient as possible. The other question I got a lot, uh, well, I got, I had one, not a lot, but it was a, it was a well, well-positioned, well-stated and well-researched question. I would say one of the best questions I, I got, uh, was about the VISP program. The, if you don't know the VISP program, this is the University of Wisconsin Summer Exchange, where traditionally we send students to, um, University of Wisconsin and/or somewhere else, um, in the summer for an international exchange program. And, uh, students are asking, last year we had to cancel it because of the COVID. And so there's a big question about whether or not we'll be able to do it this year. That answer is not final, we're, we're keeping the door open. But again, I want to say, just to manage expectations very realistically, I think the chance that travel will return, turn to normal is fairly low, um, for the summer. Now, if it does, we might be able to do that. And certainly we would be happy to be able to return to, uh, student mobility in the summer in one way or another. If we can, or in the fall, as soon as we can, we think it's important. Right now, I think it's still, um, iffy. It's still not, not certain. Some students asked if they could participate potentially in the online version of VISP. So the University of Wisconsin will allow international students to, to study online. So you could be wherever you are in Kazakhstan or the world and taking classes, uh, at, at, uh, University of Wisconsin. It's possible, but I, I have to say the, the value of these exchange programs really comes from the experience of being overseas. Our students tell us often that this, the classes at Wisconsin or Buffalo or wherever are not as good as the classes here at INU, which I love to hear. But what that means is that the value of taking those classes really comes from being there and doing the experience. So the, the cost to benefit ratio, um, is a little bit off there for us to, to send students on a virtual program. We're going to keep those doors open and we'll be, be looking at that. Yeah, okay, so one of the, I, I got ahead of myself chronologically. One of the questions about this semester and going forward, students are asking about a reading period. A lot of students are asking whether or not we can have an extra week or some time, uh, during, before finals so that students can study, uh, and sort of get their, their, their ducks in a row before they go into exams. I think that we have good news for you on that. It's, uh, it's not as good as giving you a full reading week. But the Academic Council has approved a revision of the academic calendar that adds a week, a pair of days, basically, before, before the, the final exam starts. So it's a reading period, it's not a reading week. But you will have just a little bit more time, um, there between the end of classes and the beginning of final exams. Student Government, uh, I want to thank, they did a really great job working with us on developing that program. Made a very compelling case at Academic Council multiple times. I had some very detailed conversations. Um, and I think Student Government will be coming back to you with more details on that, um, officially very soon, which is, which is really, really great. Next question I got is about students finishing enough credits. Students said, you know, it's a tough semester, I didn't take, uh, six classes like I usually would, I only took four or maybe I had to withdraw from something. And students are asking what happens if they're falling behind on credits? The answer to that really is that we're going to be working with you when we get back. We all know what happened, we all know that this was a tough, tough year. We're very, very well aware that there were things that were out of your control. And already I think we've been trying to show a lot more flexibility with, um, academic progress than we usually would. For the students who didn't finish the spring semester because of the shift to online learning, we gave a lot of exceptions, gave a lot of students extra time to finish, gave a lot of students a fourth, fifth, sixth year if they needed it. Graduate students got an extra semester to write their thesis, things like that. So what, what will happen, I think, if you are a student who's fallen a little bit behind on credits because of this year, we're going to take that into consideration. If you're somebody who hasn't been earning credits before the pandemic and still aren't earning, there might not be much we can do to help you. But if you, if you missed a couple of classes, um, we're going to work with you to try to make a 50-year possible, to trying to find ways for you to make those up. We, we want you to graduate, that's our top priority. Well, our second priority, our top priority is your health and safety. Our second priority is getting you to graduate. And so we are going to be working hard to make that work. Um, and the, the last question about, um, about the semester was, there were, there were some questions about the deadlines in the last week of classes and students were asking, sort of along with the reading week, is there a way to not have deadlines in the last week of classes? So for that answer, there are a couple of, um, couple of ways that, that I want to respond to that. One is, um, if there are deadlines that are in your syllabus, if your professor has told you that, you know, by these days you need to do this, please get started working on those now. If your deadline is, is in a week, is in a month, you don't need to, to wait three weeks to start the project. So, so part of this is working, um, with your own schedule, maybe work with your professors to stagger your, your assignments. You can finish things early and turn them in, although I understand very few of us ever do that. I certainly never did when I was a student. But you, I certainly did start working early to try to get those done. The other thing is if student, if, if faculty are, um, are actually adding new things in the last week of classes, that is against the, the, our policies. So, so you shouldn't be getting surprise exams or surprise deadlines in the last week of your classes. So if you do have a, a class that, that in, you know, the middle of the semester or in the, the two weeks before the end, the professor comes in and says, hey, guess what? I need you to write a new paper and I need it to be due on the last day of class. And we've never discussed this before. Do, do raise that issue with us. Talk to the professor first and say, hey, are you aware, you know, that this is going to be a problem for these reasons? If they, they refuse, the next step is to talk to the department chair. If you can't get satisfaction with the department chair, Dr. Enz is, is really good at convincing professors that they need to follow policies. I know he has a reputation among students as being an enforcer, um, and following policies very strictly. He has that same reputation with the professors. So, um, if professors are breaking the rules, let, um, let us know. And if, if he can't help you, um, you can talk to me, uh, as well, but hopefully it won't get to, to that point. Now, there's one last question here that I want to turn over actually. And there's a question about co-work spaces. So the, there's been a plan, um, that some of you might or might not be aware of. There's a plan in the works that we would develop some spaces that are open office spaces, basically, around the country where students can go and book time to work outside of their, their homes. DSA has been working extremely hard on that. Every time I talk to anybody from DSA, they're talking about negotiating rents and, and places and policies. Um, and I see that we have Kasim Khan and Oskat here with us today. Does one of you guys want to, um, discuss where we are on developing co-work spaces?
Yes. Good evening. Good evening, dear students. As you're already aware, uh, you know, from DSA, that, uh, jointly with Student Government, uh, we have developed, uh, or initiated, uh, in a, uh, a project of opening co-working spaces, uh, in the main original cities of Kazakhstan, uh, with the main concentration of, uh, INU students. And therefore have developed, uh, the marketing, uh, scheme and, uh, as well as the budget, uh, for the, uh, for the given project. And, uh, hopefully this week, uh, we will run the, uh, meeting with Executive Vice President to finalize this decision. But, uh, let me assure you that, uh, the decision is, uh, have been already approved, actually. Actually, an idea have been approved by, uh, President Katsu, uh, with, uh, relevant, uh, requests to EVP and DSA, to thoroughly examine this idea, uh, and finalize. So, uh, we'll keep you informed, uh, hopefully by the end of this week or the beginning of next week. And, uh, the issue will be resolved, thank you.
Great, thank you, Oskat. Do any of my colleagues on the panel, would you like to respond to any of the questions that I addressed already? Okay, in that case, Akher Kaya, um, do you have a question for us?
Um, I, I don't have any, but I have the questions from the chat and the Q and A chart as well. So I think I should start with the couple of questions from one student from the chat. What do you think about the idea of posting syllabuses before the registration instead of giving them only after one registers and sees it on the middle? Maybe a common database so that students can plan the workload ahead. Some of the panels already answered the question, but I think maybe some of you addressed the, the question publicly.
Yeah, maybe I'll turn that over to, to Dr. Enz. It's a, it's a good idea and one that we're always working on. There are some, some logistical issues, but Dr. Enz, you want to take that?
Yeah, so, um, as was already noted, um, a number of departments have their syllabi on, online and so you're able to see them. But most likely they're, they're, they're going to be generic syllabi without specific deadlines for, uh, for the upcoming semester. As with, uh, most human beings, uh, we all sort of often leave work to the very last moment. And, uh, and so syllabi are often not settled until, uh, shortly before classes begin. So it's, it's difficult for, for faculty to provide. classes begin, so it's it's difficult for for faculty to provide deadlines that that they can be confident in, that it concerns, so that students can say, okay, I know that certain assignments will be due at this time. And they can make judgments about that. These kinds of decisions are often made, you know, shortly before classes begin. So that kind of information not may not be available. What should be available is the kind of work that's available, so or it's going to be required. So for example, that there's going to be a major paper or there's going to be a number of sort of weekly assignments. And so that should give students a sense of of the work that will be expected, but the deadlines may not be there. So the information about the workload, that should be available, and I think that it's fair enough that we can faculty and departments have may not be available, or are hard to deadline. And things might be so possible.
Okay, great, thank you.
I think that that was a great answer, thank you. The next next question is also from the same student. Is there a chance that if the government allows and the other universities open their doors for offline education in fall, but NU would stay online? It's just that current first year students throughout Kazakhstan visit some of their classes, but NU students are all online. I think you partially answered this question previously, but once again, this address.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's a it's the question, so there's there's no no problem answering it in different ways. I I think, is there a possibility? Yes, there's there's always a possibility, it will depend on what's happening. I think that, you know, right now, we we're very hopeful to go back to in-person teaching in the fall. The decision, just like it's being done now, will be really based on on the public health issue situation. So if that has changed dramatically in the fall, we will be able to to go back in person. And and right now, the momentum seems to be pointed in that direction. If it's if it's still, if we're still seeing a thousand cases a day, then we probably won't be able to to open the doors. I can tell you in terms of the question about first year students, when we've had these conversations among the deans and with the provost and with the president, we've had a really strong focus on first year students. We we want all of our students to come back, but we know that for the first year students who've never, especially if you're a direct admission student, you've never spent time really living it in you or or being here regularly. So we are extremely eager for for you as a priority group to to get some time on the campus. So it's it's possible, but I I think that that we very much want it to happen. Also, let me let me say again, in case it's not evident, your professors mostly really don't like teaching online. I really don't like working online. I'm talking to you right now from the same chair that I sit in all day and all night, and sometimes I walk twenty feet to get something to eat. I haven't seen my parents in in well over a year, and I haven't been to a restaurant in about the same amount of time. So we're all eager for this to be changed, I I get a lot more work done in my office and your professors. I can tell you, I as a as a professor myself in the past, there's nothing like teaching to students who are in the same room as you. The the quality of education is different, it's not always better, but the quality of the experience for most of us is much better. So we are eager, we want it to happen, if we can make it happen, we will do it. And I see Kasim Khan is saying that the DSA is desperate to see the students in person again too. So it's possible, but we're going to try.
Okay, thank you, Professor. Then Miss, I hope we answered all of your questions. Next, I would go proceed to the Q and A chart chronologically. So the first question, how will the vaccination affect our chances of having an offline semester this this summer or the upcoming fall? And will the university require students to be vaccinated?
Yeah, good, so that's the the biggest, from my perspective, the vaccine is the biggest bright point in terms of us getting to a place where we can be back to in-person classes. If the vaccine is well distributed, so lots of people get it, and if if it seems to be effective, then the chances of us returning in person are very high. The question about whether or not the university will require it, I don't know anything official. So don't take this as a formal answer, but what I can tell you is probably, I think that, you know, most universities have vaccine requirements. I remember even when I started my graduate school, I had to go improve all my vaccines again so that I wasn't spreading diptheria and things around my campus. And given the situation right now, and as careful as Azarbayev University is being, it's probable that at least for for any early returns, we're going to insist that people can demonstrate that they have been vaccinated.
Okay, thank you. The next question, why won't we have full reading week like American universities? Our program is like American, right?
So there are a couple of interesting questions and a few interesting assumptions in that question. So I I'd say first, our our program is like an American program, is actually, that's that's the right way to put it. Well, it's not a fully American program, but there's a lot of American influence in the way we do things. But also, I I pointed out that not every university in the United States has a full reading week. My my university that I I went to as an undergraduate, University of Kansas, had stock day, we called it. It was one day when the everything stopped at the university and there was a big concert outside. And of course, nobody actually studied, but it was really, really relaxing and helpful. So I think that that's one thing, is just the assumption that all all universities have that is not quite right. The other thing that we've been working out is that when we, given the structure of our semester and the holidays in Kazakhstan, there's actually not a, there's a little bit of a conflict. So the 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 winter semester is either the the fall semester ends just before all of the December holidays. And so in order to to get sort of the final exams done in a reasonable amount of time and the grades submitted before we get to the bulk of the holidays, we can't stretch that too far. Likewise, in the in the spring, we have the May holidays that conflict with it. And so the registrar's office has been working with Student Government and the Academic Council to try to find a calendar that works. And so far, the the most efficient thing that we can find is just to add a couple of days per semester, which I hope will be an improvement anyway.
Okay, thank you. When will I be able to receive my stipends because my GPA is lower than two point three three for fall semester?
So I don't remember what the the stipend levels are, but the it will be typically the way this works is you need to, you're paid your stipend on the basis of the previous semester. So if you are able to to get your your GPA to the level it needs to be to receive a stipend, it will be in the next semester that you'll receive it. So if you if two point three three was too low for the the stipend based on fall semester, you'll have to wait and it'll be on the basis of your results in the spring semester that you you'll be able to get it again. So not not soon.
Hey, good evening. Who should I contact if the deposits of thirty thousand still hasn't, Tengay still hasn't been returned to me? I've already emailed Purzar's office, Maya Davlyeva and Davren Shalakhmetov several times. And unfortunately, there was no response, thank you for in advance.
Yeah, I see Maya is writing an answer to that. Does Maya or one of our?
Yeah, I'm going to reply to students, I guess we have to check Purzar's office to make sure that students completed his and provide the agreement and two quarters original. And once I get it and will be returning the deposit, I'll I'll I will reply to him.
Okay, good, thank you, Maya. And as a as a general thing, if you've written to to anybody in you and they haven't responded to you and it's been more than a few days, and you try again, it looks like this person has, and it's still not responding after a few days, you can reach out to to somebody else, you can reach out to me, but I'm so busy, I'm likely to not respond. Depending on the time, you can try, you can try certainly, DSA and certainly Dr. Enz is always available to help with things like this. The only thing that I'll caution, and this is not at all directed at this comment, because this comment looks like this person is doing everything right. Sometimes students will write to me and say, I wrote to Professor whoever, they'll say Trusha, just because of your pictures in front of my screen. And he hasn't responded, what's wrong with him? And then I'll look into it and I'll discover it was two hours ago, this person wrote to Professor Trusha. So please do give people maybe forty eight hours before you assume they're they're ignoring you or they've forgotten you. But we do want everybody to respond, so don't hesitate to write to Dr. Enz or me.
Okay, thank you. Next question, in the long-term perspective, is it possible that students will have an opportunity to have an exchange program during the fall-spring semester, not only the summer's program, taking into account all the cancellations of the past and this year, academic year?
Yeah, um, it's so in the long-term perspective, at first I thought this mean it, this meant in the really long term, I would much prefer that our exchanges were during the fall and spring semester rather than the summer anyway. Being at a a university, as you know, from being on our campus, for those of you who are not first year students, it's just so much of a different experience in the fall and spring than it is in the summer. So I prefer that students can go in the fall and spring. This is certainly possible, anytime a student is able to find a a study abroad opportunity that they can get funding for and it's an approved, that we can approve the credits, you certainly may do this. I think the question really is about whether or not an Azarbayev University will pay for that semester, which is actually a different question. And that's that's something that we've worked on in the past, and the pandemic actually kind of interrupted some progress on that. I would say whether or not it's going to be possible this year will depend in part on the the pandemic situation, also the budget, which, as you probably know, the state budget is not not as strong this year as it has been in the past, so it's it's possible, but it would be limited. When we looked at this question, actually, two years ago, maybe even three years ago, was the first time we looked at the question of whether we could send students to Wisconsin in the fall semester rather than in the summer semester. The the challenge was that the fall semester is much more expensive. Because you, when you're there, the most expensive part of studying overseas is the the living expenses. You have to pay for an apartment or a dormitory, you have to pay for food, all of those things. And since the this the fall semester is twice as long as the summer semester, the cost is about twice as much. And so what we looked at two you, two or three years ago, when we looked at this question, was that if we were going to send students overseas during the fall semester, we would only be able to send half as many. And at the end of the day, we decided at that point that it was better to have more students having that experience than just three or four students getting the longer experience. I would say in the longer, longer term, whether or not an Azarbayev University can continue paying for students to travel overseas is a big question. There are very, very few universities that I'm familiar with that pay for a big cohort of students to have a study abroad semester completely for free, in addition to a free education and a stipend. It's one of the great things that I think we've been able to provide. But I I think whether or not that's going to be possible forever is a question. So as students, you might go out and look for scholarship opportunities. There are, there are scholarship programs sometimes that will will pay for students to to have these experiences, and certainly they're self-funded. So we're going to work on Erasmus Plus, we've got a few Erasmus Plus that we've been able to do with graduate students already. And that's that's really the future, I think, for study abroad opportunities. Immediately, fall twenty twenty one. I'd say there's a chance, but I'd say if it happens, it will be a very, very small number of students who are able to do it.
Okay, thank you. Couple of questions would be the same, will there be a pass fail or is the UD system this semester or the upcoming year?
So as of now, the answer is no. Right, right at this moment, we are working on a letter grade system for for the spring semester. I know this question has come up, and I know that the this question has come to the deans through the the Student Government, and I think we're going to be discussing it at Academic Council again. I I'll tell you that I I think there's a strong sentiment towards no for that. And there there are lots of reasons for that. One, the biggest reason is that we've had now a full academic year of students not earning grades but earning SDUD. And one disrupted semester is one thing, two disrupted semesters is, you know, it's it's tolerable in the the conditions, but we're really worried about the students who are heading to graduation who don't have a lot of of grades in their GPA. We're worried about what that will mean for them in applying for graduate schools. We're worried about some students who have GPAs that are low, that that we're not going to be able to get up to the required level for graduation without getting some letter grades. And there are a few other complications like our inability to do dean's list with the SDUD, which we would very, very much like to return to students. So I I think it's it's an open question whether or not there would be an SDUD, but right now, the answer is no. And I think there are probably a lot of reasons why we're we're we think that this year it's not a good idea. And we think that this year, the disruption, we hope will be felt a little bit more lightly because the the professors now have had a semester and a half of experience teaching online. Phil, do you want to respond to that at all? Did you want to add anything, Dr. Enz?
I'll just, I'll just echo that the that that answer. We're going to be taking it up with the university level Learning and Teaching Committee tomorrow. And I I'm going to be honest, and I'm going to strongly oppose it. As a dean said, a transcript with three semesters of of disruption grades is is not good. It doesn't look good, it's not good for for students, or that they're applying for graduate programs. But the letter grades are are very important for for determining that the the quality of work that a student has done. And the disrupted grades signal a kind of uncertainty about the work that students have done. And so having a lot of those is is not, is not good for students, it's not good for the university. But I also want to point out that that we haven't been able to run dean's lists. And and in my opinion, that's that's important, we need to recognize students who who have done very well. And that's important too. And so for me, that's a priority, being able to run dean's list. So I think that there there are a number of good reasons why we should not have the SDUD grading, and and I I will be strongly opposing it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I was also asked to announce that other panelists are welcome to answer the questions or add comments and interrupt me or Professor Pugh freely so that we'll have a more interactive discussion here. Okay, so the next question is about coworking spaces. Will they be available for the whole period of the semester or only during the midterm and final weeks?
So Oskat, maybe you can answer that? Or Kasim Khan? The question is, will coworking spaces be available all semester or only during midterm and finals?
Okay, hello everyone, okay, Oskat is here.
Oh, okay, Kasim Khan, sorry for interrupting your speech. You you may continue. Yes, let me clarify. The coworking spaces will be available in the period of pre-exam, pre-exam and during the exam. Because it's it's pretty much expensive and time-consuming. That's why it was it was decided to to find the option, the optimal option to to offer the coworking spaces for two weeks or three weeks period, especially pre-exam and during the exam. But let's see, the the upcoming meeting with the Executive Vice President, maybe we'll come up with a solution to rent coworking spaces for the whole spring semester. Actually, I am not against that. Kasim Khan, would you add something?
No, nothing to add, thank you.
Okay.
Great, thank you, guys.
Great, thank you for answering those. The next question is, would the university recommend any vaccines?
So I think that is definitely something that I'm not in a position to to say. And so it's a really interesting question, actually. Let me let me ask the dean of medicine if the university will be endorsing any of the individual vaccines that are on the market. I can tell you that the university will be endorsing. that the university will be endorsing the idea of vaccine and that, that people should be vaccinated if they want to, to come back to campus. But I think endorsing one of the products individually probably will, will require us to have more information about it. I know that as of right now, I can tell you the only other thing I know, and if you read the news, you might know this as well. The Sputnik five vaccine will be distributed, we think, starting on Monday. And it'll be distributed to university people starting on March first, according to the plan. The Pfizer vaccine has been approved for distribution in Kazakhstan, but from what I'm aware of, nobody has it. And the logistics of getting it and storing it at minus seventy degrees are such that it might be very, very difficult for anyone to get it here. Even at U M C, I know they're struggling right now to work out the logistics. And of course, there's the Kazakhstan produced vaccine that's being worked out that's in stage three trials now. And since it's still in stage three, we, we don't really know what will happen with it.
Great, thank you. The next question is a bit of a long one. It took two questions to formalize one. So why in university all the sports centers are working? Can you restrict their work in order to call back freshmen in university? Don't you think that this is a very, this is very unfair when all other standards have, have an access to university but not students of this university? Also, I think this is the continuation. Our university campus is closed for students, yet it's open for everybody else from outside. I'm talking about the athletic center and its visitors. There have been several cases when students with P T R results, I think it's, that's the COVID tests, were not allowed to visit that same athletic center when random kids and their parents from town without the test had an open access. How can university administration explain this? This is a fair question.
I think this is a very fair question and it's one that I'm, I've heard from professors as well who want to know why they're not in their offices. So what I can tell you about that is that the, because I've asked this question also, the, the athletic center is set off as separate from the university. They've, they've put up barriers so people who access the athletic center can't drive into campus. And those people are only allowed into the athletic center. So the, the people who are going to the athletic center, I think, are the way the university is conceiving it. We are understanding that the athletic center is a different facility. It's, there's no blending of the people in the athletic center and the people on campus. And I, I think that the, the idea is that closing the athletic center wouldn't really do anything to help students or, or faculty or staff. But closing it would hurt the, the, the children who are, are exercising there and the families. That's the best answer I can give. I, I completely understand the question. But I, I do think that there's been a few, there has been a misunderstanding about how that's working and it's not, certainly the, the people from the, the athletic center are not coming into the main part of campus. And like I mentioned before, actually, none of us are right now. I haven't been in my office in months. People are not going to the library. There are a few people who are working in the labs who have really critical research right now. But I guess I'm thinking of the athletic center now as basically a separate facility. That's a really good question. And actually, okay, before you go on, I'm going to jump in. You skipped a question. Somebody did ask about my sartorial choices and why I'm wearing a jacket. You called me out on it. I guess I gave my hand away earlier by saying that I'm sitting in the same chair I always sit in and the only person I see is my wife and the only thing I ever do is walk to the refrigerator to eat lunch. I put on a jacket to try to impress you because I wanted everyone to think I looked really professional. And it also made me feel a little bit more like an actual, actual dean today. But yeah, this is, this is, these are the choices we make about, about zooming. Good catch.
Thank you. We do appreciate your look today.
Thank you.
The next question is, can a second year student with less than hundred and twenty credits become an officially employed, employed research assistant if the professor approves it?
So before I answer that specific question, I saw another question about R A's. There was a student who said they're an undergraduate research assistant and the contract hasn't been approved yet and wants to know what's going on. And so I'll say that in general, for the research assistants right now, the, the, the biggest challenge is getting into the labs. And since we're, we're only allowed to occupy the labs at ten percent of their capacity, we're not approving undergraduate research assistants to go into the labs right now. And until we're able to move into a better stage of the virus where we're told that we can have a higher percentage of people in the labs, we're, we're not going to, to be approving undergraduate R A contracts. As to the question about under a hundred twenty credit hours, that one, I'm not actually sure. Maya, do you know the answer to that? Maybe.
What is, question about what?
Whether a student, what, is there a credit limit before a student can qualify to apply for an R A contract?
Not actually, because this research contract usually is signed up by the faculty member. And we have only third and fourth year students biology and chemistry who are working on the contract.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So, so then the, the answer, as far as I can tell, is that the credit limit isn't, isn't the issue, it's the lab access. And Jadira, I see you're following up that you are not going into the labs. Why don't you send me a follow-up email and we'll work out what's going on with that situation? So you can email me dpugh@inu, DPU, I'll answer right away.
Thank you. When will we possibly receive the decision, decision about upcoming summer and fall semester? I think the same question is a more of a timing focus.
Yeah, in terms of when we'll have a decision, that's, that's, that's a good question. Last semester, you'll recall that we made the decision, it was in October that we had the decision about January. So I would think right around Naruz, we should have a pretty clear picture. Given that the vaccine should start rolling out to university people in March, we might push that, that decision just a little bit later. So somewhere between the middle of March and the middle of April is my guess for when we'll have an answer.
Thank you. Can you give any comments on the property laws of the students from the dorms?
I can. I wonder if D S A would prefer to answer that.
Yes, thank you for the question, guys. Okay, regarding property laws, we, according to, sorry, it's loud outside. According to the Instagram post, we've initiated the investigation. And also yesterday, we've sent the email, an email to all students. If they have any concerns about property laws, they should write an email to Bakhmet Abishva. You may check your emails, please, email boxes. We've got four emails. Three of them, we already checked and found all missing items according to students. So it was like cases where students just don't remember that they had additional bags or boxes in different storage rooms. And one email was like, it's a funny case when student admires that he
I think we lost Kostum Khan.
But I think the answer is, was pretty clear that the investigation is going on. And you can also email, make a follow-up emails that you have any questions or the solution for the questions. Okay, the next question is, it once again repeats the one. Why do any students need to provide the COVID tests to access at the athletic center? At the same time, others, external people are not required to provide these tests. In Astana, in everywhere in Kazakhstan, gyms and swimming pools do not require to provide the tests. Why?
Okay, so the athletic center questions, we might have to, to, to pass to someone else who has more details. We might have to follow up with answers. But what I can tell you, when I've asked a similar question, is that there are, there are hours that have been set up for N U people specifically. So there is a couple of hours every day where only faculty and students from N U are allowed in the athletic center. And for those periods, we, we want everyone there to be P C R tested, just like the few people who are going to the laboratories need to have a P C R test. And the, the logic of it is that, that's, that's a place where you've got N U people together. And if they're, if somebody were to bring the, the virus into the athletic center at that time, and then a faculty member or a student took it back to their home, if they live on campus, then we would potentially have the virus in the dorms or in the faculty residence. And that's what we're trying to predict. The, the people who are, are coming from outside theoretically are, are staying together, not mixing with anybody from N U and then leaving. So there's no risk to the N U community from that. I do see, I'll jump ahead, that there's a question down the line that somebody says, no, some friends from other universities I know personally visit athletic center and easily enter the atrium of the university and send me photos. That is, I, I, I don't doubt you. I'm not, I don't want to cast any doubt. What I can say is that when we've raised the possibility of that with the security service here, they've told us that it's not happening and it can't happen. But they have said, if we see it happening, to report it and send photos. I'm sure you don't want to be reporting your friends. But if you, if you are hearing about things that you want the security service to be aware of, you can let them know. You can, you can let D S A or us know as well. If we can figure out how that's happening, I know security has said that they will try to prevent it.
Okay, I think also I should announce it out loud. There is one more comment about the question regarding the question. So the question about athletic center is not about people coming in it. It's mostly about why students need to take these tests together while others don't.
So I, that, I get that, the answer that, as far as I understand, is that the students need to take the P C R test if they're going to use the athletic center at the N U only time. So I, I guess theoretically, if you're a student living in, in Astana, you could, you could join the athletic center as a community member rather than as a, a student and then you probably wouldn't. But if you're going to be there at the time, that's only for students and faculty, then you need to have the, the P C R test.
I really do hope that this answers the question. Why the dean's list cannot be awarded for the students who haven't transferred grades to U D N S D pass fail system?
Dr. Enz, you want to take that one?
So I'm not sure exactly of, of the reasons that some of the people have been, why the provost's office has opposed that. But I, I think that the logic is right in that we shouldn't be sort of discriminating based on what grades or how students are choosing their grades and, and their grading. I think that the dean's list is meant to be an evaluation of, of success over the semester and the end, you know, GPA and not which classes they took. And I, I think we would want to avoid that kind of discrimination. And so I, I would agree that it shouldn't be discrimination between, you know, who takes a U D or S, S D and, and who doesn't. So, but as I said, for me, it, it is very important that we do dean's list again. I, I, I think that, that it's very important that we identify and, and congratulate and celebrate the success of students in, in our, in our schools. And dean's list is a very important part of that. And I understand that dean's lists are important for students who, who are wanting to go on to, to further studies and they, they want that on their, their record. And so we want to support these students. So for me, a priority is to make sure we get dean's list again. That, that it's going to be a consequence, that the cost of having the S D U D. But I, I think it is a priority that we do dean's list again, which is why I, I won't support the S D U D grading.
Great, thanks. Do students have to go through three years of service or the after graduating from university?
I think, D S A, can you answer the honor book question?
Regarding three years of work, you need to send your questions and concerns to Korean Rising Center. While dealing with
I guess we've lost Kostum Khan again.
Can I answer for this question?
Yes, please.
This regarding, it was confirmed by the legal department in September. There is still valid and the students who are graduating, they're supposed to work in Kazakhstan about three years. If they were awarded to stay the ground before.
But as I understand, there's a waiver if they get a graduate. Oops, sorry, go. Is there a waiver though, if the students are going on to study overseas? As I understand, international graduate school or grad school within Kazakhstan pauses the honor book.
Yeah, they're given a waiver for temporary, but still after that, they need to come back and work in Kazakhstan about three years.
Okay, good, thank you. So it's, it's like the Bullock check system.
Yeah, but nobody is monitoring, as far as I know, there is no system that usually works, but it's legally, yeah, it's still valid.
Yeah, I won't comment on that. What I'll say is that's the law and we're, we are not monitoring it. We're not sure who is, so.
As a, as a perspective graduate, I would say that it would be good to announce it for everybody because I see some confusion in myself. I have, I didn't notice and I'm just hearing it, so.
Okay.
Can university provide access to campus for Astana residents, especially the library?
Yeah, this is, this has been part of the discussion about coworking spaces, whether or not that could be possible. I think the, right now, because of the red status, we, we're not letting basically anybody into the main part of campus except for the athletic center. So the, right now, the answer is no. Kostum Khan or, or Ashot, if you're, you're with us, can you, can you tell us that is the, the coworking space in Astana planned to be the library or is it going to be a separate space? I think maybe we lost the internet for both of them. What I'll just say is that last semester, we were able to start allowing, earlier this semester, we were able to start allowing PhD students into the library. And so chances are, if, if we're able to start doing it, it'll be a limited thing. Since we have four thousand undergraduate students, we won't be able to open it up to, to everybody. But if we get back to where the, the, the infection rates are lower again, then we might be able to start doing a, a limited signup. But I think we're hoping to start with the, the coworking center first.
Great, thanks. Would it be required to have, to have to be vaccinated to come to the campus?
Interesting. I, it's, that's a really good question. So will it be required to be vaccinated to come to the campus? I think in the beginning, when we start opening up for things like graduation, assuming that's, that's when we start opening up. I think yes, we're gonna, we're gonna need students to prove that they've been vaccinated because we can't risk having an outbreak on campus while we're trying to, to stop things. So I think the, I, I, I would say the answer is probably that we will be requiring some kind of an evidence of that. It's not official yet, so there's no, no real requirement. And in the long run, probably that, that requirement will fade depending on what happens with the virus.
Great, thank you. Why does, why does the administration encourage students to report other students cheating? Of course, we understand that cheating is not academically honest and so on. And that is, that is a student's choice and the student will face consequences of that. But just the fact that administration is encouraging students to spy on other students and selling them is a bit of disappointing. Thank you for in advance.
That's an interesting question. There's an assumption there that might not be fully accurate. We, let me, let me think about how to frame this. We, we certainly don't want students out there forming their own secret police, setting up a spiring to, to bring other students down. That, that isn't, isn't what we want you spending your time doing. But the, we do think that, that cheating damages everybody. It's not a personal choice for students that, that's the same as any other personal choice. When a student chooses to cheat, they undermine the value of their education and yours. I'm sure nobody on this call would ever cheat. But when a student who's not on this call chose to cheat, they, they really are devaluing what it means to be a student in Azerbaijan University and devaluing what's in your, what, what you earn in your diploma. And so we do, we do certainly accept students letting us know. And sometimes we'll ask students to clarify things when we have reports. Students do come individually and tell us that things are happening and we, we will look for more details. So it's, it's like recording a crime. We, if you see something serious going on, we, we would encourage you to, to, you know, I'd encourage you, if you can, to, to say to your colleagues, hey, that's not a good idea. But also if you see something disturbing, to let us know. It's, this is one of our graduate, one of the most important graduate attributes for our students is that we want our students to be high in integrity in everything that they do. It's, this is one of our graduate, one of the most important graduate attributes for our students is that we want our students to be high in integrity in everything that they do. And so we 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 don't consider this a simple personal choice. It's it's not just something that you can choose to do or not to do. We consider it a major problem. Dr. Enz, you you're the pointy end of the stick when it comes to academic integrity violations. Do you want to respond to that, too?
Yeah. I I I will say that I, something that I'm a bit disappointed with here at at Nazarbayev University and the students here is that the the degree to which students don't seem to appreciate that that cheating has consequences for all students. So that if some students cheat, it has consequences for all students. That that the reputation and the value of your degrees depends on people's impression that the grades are accurate reflections of the work that a student has done. And what cheating does is it introduces a kind of doubt or suspicion about your grades. So a Kerke, if I I apologize for, well, I'm not apologizing, you know, a Kerke is graduating. She's a great student. She's worked hard. She's got these great grades and she can be proud of that. And she can show those grades, whether she decides to go on a graduate program or what else. She can show the grades as evidence of the work that she has done. But but that only works if people understand that that a transcript from NU is an accurate reflection of the work that that students have done. And that a Kerke's transcript is an accurate reflection of the work that a Kerke has done. She can hold that up and say, this is my, these are my grades. I worked hard. And we can have some trust that that's in fact actually the the fact. But when there's cheating, when and when there's particularly when there's systematic, large-scale cheating, then there's the introduction of a kind of doubt and suspicion. I mean, did, you know, did that student really earn those grades? I mean, did they really get, you know, do the work to earn that? And this then lowers the 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 value of your degrees. And so the degree, the the way in which students here don't seem to appreciate that that they they need to take ownership of of this cheating because it increases and improves the value of their degrees. So Dr. Pugh can speak to this as well. But in the universities that I'm familiar with, when there are discipline cases, often when it gets very serious, students are involved. Students are involved in discipline case, in disciplinary decisions, and they're often very, very harsh. In some of the most harsh decisions, you know, as a as a professor, I've had to sort of caution, you know, students to not make it too harsh. But students are often very harsh in 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 penalizing fellow students about cheating because they recognize the the cost that it comes, that comes with cheating. And so it's very important to have a reputation that cheating is just not what we do. And that's something I think that we need to do better at our university and that students need to take up ownership of. That cheating is not what we do at NU. And when you see an NU transcript, it is very likely to reflect the degree, the the work that students have done. And I would like to see students take more ownership of that. Now, I don't, as as Dean Pugh said, I, you know, I don't want, you know, spy, you know, you know, people spying on each other. And I've tried to avoid that. I, you know, we're asking, you know, please, you know, come and contact me if you see cheating. I don't want spying on each other. But I do think students need to take more ownership of this issue. That that cheating is something that devalues your transcripts. It devalues your degree. And I would like to see students take more ownership of that. And that doesn't mean coming to me. That means you telling, students telling each other, you know, we just won't accept that. We don't accept this. Stop it. And we we won't, we don't want to have any part of that in our groups, in our, you know, channels or whatever. But I would like to see students take more ownership of that. So that's not just me and everybody thinks, oh, you know, Dr. Enz, you know, he's just, you know, he enjoys punishing students, which I hate. I hate doing it. I hate that part of my job. I don't want any part of it, but I've got to do it because it matters for your degrees. If I'm not doing it, your degrees are worth less. So I'm doing it because I want your degrees to be worth as much as possible. And so I I would like to see students taking more ownership of it, of this issue of cheating and and not just me.
Despite your great answer, I think there is a follow-up question. Is it true that Professor Enz moderates the Telegram groups among students, the group chats or the course group chat?
I am following all of your Telegram channels. I'm on every one of them. You don't know who, you don't know who it is, but I'm on all of your channels. No, no, I don't have Telegram. I don't have, you know, all of these channels, social, I don't do social media at all. I'm an old, you know, I I don't, I hate technology. I'm on any channels. I'm not moderating. I'm not on these things. No.
Let me just follow up by saying there was, I I think I know where that question comes from, which is that somebody was, somebody created an impersonation account for Dr. Enz online and was posting allegedly, actually questions suggesting that people spy on each other and that we would give points for this and all kinds of other things. Dr. Enz is absolutely not using Telegram. I can tell you, I've tried to email him on WhatsApp and that's hard, text him on WhatsApp and that's hard enough. But the more importantly, there there wasn't an email that I think went out to students earlier this semester. If we have something to say to you from the university officially, we will use our official university email. We might follow up with something on a on a social media, but there will always be an official university email or something on the official university webpage or at most one of the official university social media groups like the the confirmed Facebook group for NU. If you get an email from any of us, including I saw one fake account on one social media site for President Katsu. If you get a message from anybody, President Katsu, me, Dr. Enz, one of your professors on one of those platforms that seems strange, don't believe it. Send us an email at our real email accounts to confirm it because we, that's not how we operate.
Great, thank you. Shifting from that theme, is it allowed for NU students to apply and travel via Global Ugrad Program?
Absolutely. We we've done it before in the past and it's been really successful. Please, yeah, if you see an opportunity like Ugrad that you want to apply for, take advantage of it. What are the one thing to keep in mind? If you're going to study abroad and you want to transfer credits back to Nazarbayev University when you're done, you need to have the classes that you're going to take approved before you go. So get in touch with somebody in in Maya's office or Dr. Enz and and talk to them about how to do that. But if you get accepted to Ugrad, we will look at the classes you're going to take at your host university and we'll we'll make a decision about transferring credit before, it has to be before you go. But yes, I encourage you. It's great.
Great. About Dean's List, does it mean that students who didn't convert their grades into SDUD cannot get the recognition they deserve because of other students who choose to use the SDUD? I mean, wasn't it their choice? I don't see any discrimination. I think that the question is addressed to.
Yeah, I, well, I can answer that as well. I was at the, a meeting where this was, a couple meetings where this was discussed. When the the question of SDUD came up, this was part of the discussion, including student government, was if we do this, we we won't be able to to give to give the the Dean's List because we'll we'll have to consider it a disrupted semester. I I I happen to think that's unfortunate, but that's the decision that that was taken. I would say if you took all As in a in a disrupted semester, you're going to get recognition. It it won't say Dean's List on your your transcript, but when people see it first, they'll know that you're a good student. I'll also say that I wrote one letter recommendation recently, which I don't do very often because I don't have have that many students I work with closely. And I, in it, I noted that the student had not taken SDUD during a disrupted semester and still got good grades. So I think your your professors who are writing your letters of recommendation will bring that to the attention as well of any universities you're applying to. So the answer is yes, that means you're not going to get that credit, but I don't think it's necessarily the end of the world.
Great, thank you. Where can students read about the working off at the university? Is there some reliable, recently published source of data?
No, I think is the answer. The, when when I've tried to look into this, the information is incredibly, incredibly vague. In your, the contract that you signed and the contract that every university student in Kazakhstan signs, if they're on a state grant, there is information that says that you have this obligation. When we've tried to to find details about it in the past, it's it's been really vague. My recommendation is to write to DSA or the Career Advising Center because they have maintained all of the 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 information that we have from the legal department about this. And I'll tell you that what we have found, every time we looked into this, is that, yes, there's a requirement for for working off the the three-year requirement. It's true for every every student in Kazakhstan who's on a state grant. And as of now, it's not clear who, if anyone, is monitoring it. This has been the case for the last several years, so you can look at the experience of our students for the last few years to find out how it's enforced.
Okay, great, thank you. There is a kind suggestion about the COVID tests. Please consider antibody tests as alternative to vaccines, as accepting or not. The vaccine is up to every student. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. And let me be really clear that I'm not a medical doctor and I'm not not a virologist or immunologist or anything else. So anything that I I say about the requirements is is my own speculation. As of now, there is no requirement for students to get a vaccine. I think that decision will be made by people primarily in the medical school who understand this a lot better than than I do. So I, my prediction is that we will strongly encourage, if not require it. It's not, nothing has been decided yet, so we'll take that into consideration. I would say that I think there's still some question about whether or not positive antibodies from prior infection is enough to 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 promote actual actual immunity. I know of at least one, one personal friend who was infected twice with COVID-19 this year, so so that seems to be possible. And yeah, I think I'll leave it there, but you know, I I understand that vaccines are controversial now. The science around vaccines is strong. The science around vaccines say that they're they're safe, they're effective. And we have specialists here who study vaccines who we can maybe bring out for a presentation later this year if we need to.
Okay, great. Is it true that the percentage of As in a particular course should not exceed some percent? And at the same time for other grades, what if hypothetically, a lot of students in a course got an A? Will there be a reverse reverse curve?
Dr. Enz, you want to take that one?
So there there is no such school policy. The, I I will say that I I do recommend a kind of range of A grades as being recommended, but it is not enforced and it's not, it's not that there can only be a certain number of As and so it's not, there's no policy about reverse curving. I I do think that there 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 has been some pressure on language courses, language instructors to to maybe be a bit more careful in in the assigning of of A grades because there's been perhaps a bit too many of them. And so I think that they may be trying to to be more thorough or to be more to to be more careful in their grading, to to be more, to have a greater range of courses, a greater range of of grades. I think this is important. It it's 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 important that there's a range of grades so that we're identifying the best students, students who are who are doing excellent work. Students who are excellent, doing excellent work should get the As and and that's what an A should mean. But it's, this is not being forced by me or by the school. And so I'm not exactly sure of all the details, but what I will say is that that this could be a policy of the instructor and it's not sort of imposed by school.
Well, I mean, I would say we give guidance and I I would say that from my perspective, if we have a professor who only gives the grade of A, there is a real problem. I I actually, I would go a little farther than Dr. Enz and say that if one of our professors doesn't discriminate between better performing and lower performing students, either their course isn't being pitched at the right level and it's not appropriate for university students or they are, they're not doing their job in terms of making that distinction between who's doing the work sufficiently and who's not. It it happens. I mean, we certainly have seen classes where all students get As and it's not a problem. If it happens that you have a a class that's full of brilliant students and that's okay. So that's that, that's where I agree with Dr. Enz, that we wouldn't necessarily, we we don't impose retroactively a a curve. We don't decide outside of the class who should get an A. But if a professor consistently is giving all As in a class, when we're making decisions about that that faculty members' performance, I take that as a sign that they're not, they're not doing their job to be frank once about it.
Great, thank you. If the decision regarding the student's return to the university is positive, in other words, it will be recommended for the students to come back, will all an at-once approach be used so that all undergraduate graduate PGD students will be required to return immediately? Or will the process of accommodation will take place like several waves, the freshman's, masters or you got the question?
It's it's a great question and again, it's going to depend on how things come. If, you know, NU has taken a really conservative approach to bringing people back. And so I I think we will continue to do that. We won't probably rush to get everyone back. If though, for example, by the fall semester, it's clear that that it's really, really okay, we probably will bring everybody back. It's really difficult for us to run mixed classes where some students are here and some students aren't. So my preference would be to bring everybody back together, but to do it once, it's it's really safe. I know I could speculate all night, but I'll just say for now, I don't know.
Thank you. I think the next question is also was addressed to Dr. Enz. It's about the great distribution, about the language professors. And the question is, so language professors are forced to have even higher standards for A grades, even in 100-level courses? Why is this policy being implemented? Do you think that all NU students in language classes are not capable of studying 100-level course, language classes and receive an A?
As as Dr. Pugh said, it is certainly possible that all the students in this, in the class do excellent work and then they absolutely deserve a grade of A. The problem is that I think we recognize that 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 doesn't happen a lot. And so there is often a range of 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 the quality of the work. And again, the goal, our goal is to identify the the quality of the work. And so the grades are that, a recognition of that of that quality. So an A is excellent and B is very good, C is satisfactory, D is not satisfactory. And so these are different ways in which we signal the the kind of work that's that students are doing. And so it's very important that we're accurately assigning grades and that the grades rec, reflect the work that students are doing. And students just do a a variety of the quality of work. And that's just, that's just who we are as human beings. And so that that it should be there. There are going to be exceptions. And and we certainly recognize that and that there's no problem with that. If it's, if a language class, all the students are doing excellent work, then that's great. We're very happy with that. But if it's consistent, then we'd say, well, that doesn't reflect what we experience in the other classes where the the work is often distributed, the quality of the work is distributed. So we have a nice bell curve, you know, we have a nice curve of grades usually in most classes and that's what I would expect. But if it's not happening, if it if it's constantly, if it's regular, then then there's a problem. And again, this is a problem for for what we're, the the grades that we're offering and and transcripts because we want the transcripts to reflect the the quality of work that students are doing. And so we want very much to be able to identify especially the ex, the the work, students who are doing excellent work. We want them to be recognized. And the best way to do that is to make sure that students who are doing excellent work are getting As and students who are doing the kind of quality of work, that their grades reflect that as well. So it's important that the grades reflect the quality of work.
Okay, great, thank you for answering once again. Good evening. Some students are concerned about which GPA will be considered for scholarship programs. If students utilize the SD option and now they are in the top seven students in their major, will they have a chance to apply for an exchange program at the University of Wisconsin? We are all aware that SDUD grading was utilized in spring and fall the semesters. However, other side of the coin is that some students assume that it will be unfair for those students who didn't, who didn't use SD grading. However, other side of the coin is that some students assume that it will be unfair for those students who did, who didn't use SD grading and are still in the top ranking students. And they are willing to know what decisions would be taken. They are usually waiting for your answers. Thank you for the answers in advance.
It's not, you know, it's, there's a lot of ifs in that that question, but the, what I'd say is that when we review the students' GPAs for the 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 study abroad programs, it's extremely competitive. And yeah, we're going to almost definitely look at students who took letter grades more favorably because those are grades that we we know what those grades are. And those are students who we know were, took that that risk. A you, an SD could be a C. We don't know, or it could be an A. So well, I would say that if you're you're thinking you're going to be in that very, very top elite group of your your class, if the SDUD is an option this year, avoid it. You'll do about more for yourself by taking the grade.
Great, thank you. Can I study to Ugrad or any other transfer exchange programs on my fourth year considering the capstone courses?
Traditionally, this amount, the year to do study abroad would be third year. If you want to do it in the fourth year and you have a capstone, you're going to need to work out a way of doing that. So it'll depend on how the capstone is structured in your major. I would say talk to your your advisor and work out with them how the capstone can be accomplished. In some cases, it might be possible, but in some cases, it might not.
Okay, this, once again, regarding the academic exchange, with which academic exchange programs NU can work which are not listed in the university websites? I mean about transferring of credits and overall about confidentiality with academic exchange programs not listed in the website?
So yeah, anything in the world is open to you. The NU has very, very few formal programs at this point. And so the way that works is if you find one, so if you looked online and you found, you know, you found that you wanted to study at Berkeley, University of California, Berkeley, one of the best universities in the world. We don't have a formal exchange program with them. But what you would want to do is you would bring us the the list of courses and hopefully the syllabus that you want to take at Berkeley. We'd look at them with the appropriate department and then we'd work out the credit transfer. And we've done this a number of times and it's it's absolutely something we can do. But the responsibility for those ones is is on you, so it it does take more work.
Okay, thank you. What is the date of the start of classes in fall 2021?
Oh, that's a timely question. We approved the academic calendar today at Academic Council. Fall classes will start August 16th.
Okay, great. August 16th, once again. How will the library books returning process be organized? Would it be similar to how it was previous year? When and where should we bring them?
Are any of our DSA colleagues here? Because they organize that. Cosmicon, are you still with us? No, maybe not. So the the way it worked last year, I think, would would probably be the same this year. DSA will organize drop off locations where where the, where students can bring the books so that we can get those and get you checked out.
Okay, I think Cosmicon is here and he's raising his hand.
Oh, he is raising his hand. Okay, I didn't see him. Great, thank you.
Or maybe he's just letting us know that he's here and can talk right now.
Okay.
Okay. Dr. Pugh and Dr. Enz, can you talk about where the idea for the meetings? I assume it's a town hall meeting like this came from. We don't see other schools doing them.
The, so, yeah, I'd love to take credit for it, but actually, the the provost and president keep telling us, reminding us how important it is to to have regular communication. And they, so the the president provost have these meetings with the the faculty. And so they would sort of agreed that we would do it also with students. I think the other schools will be doing it starting maybe next week. We just got ahead of the curve.
Okay, there's just a brief comment from Cosmicon. Cosmicon, you are allowed to, you have the all the functions to unmute yourself.
Yeah, hello. Sorry for my poor internet connection on my phone. I was on my way from campus to home. Okay. If I understand correctly, the question was about your books and how to submit them to the library. I think the library will send all instructions. How can you submit them, for example, at the main gates at Kebabai Batir or Turan Avenue? Or for example, if you are in another city, how how to deliver them via DHL or whatever. But if your book or books are on campus, in the locker or storage rooms, they may ask DSA to assist you. And in that case, you need to provide all the information, where's your book, the amount of books and the name of the book. And this summer, it was me who assisted, who collected all books from all over the campus, from locker rooms and offices and submitted instead to the library instead of students, for instead of graduating students, in order to help them to fill checkout list.
Okay, great. Thank you, Cosmicon. And so far, it's the last question. Will you consider partial return of students to the campus, like 60 or 80% capacity? If yes, will the students who need lab practices will be given priority?
Yeah, for sure. Absolutely. We had hoped, as some of you know, that this semester already, we would be able to return more students to to get into the labs. We weren't able to largely because of the the COVID situation. But I I wouldn't give a a clear ranking right now. But I'll say that the groups that that we're really sort of have in mind as high priority are the students who need lab access, students for whom that is really a critical component of your education. The the first year students, we really want to get first year students a chance to spend some time on campus. Other students who who have reasons that they need to be working in person. So that it's very possible that we would, we would start with the students who need the labs if we're only, for example, if we were able to bring back 25% of students and not the rest, that's how we would start.
Okay, that wasn't the last question. So what are the criteria of studying abroad by students exchange, especially about the Medicine, Wisconsin University?
Okay, so yeah, let me, first, I'll say that that the, if you want to do a study abroad program that the university is not paying for, the requirements are are very different. So if you, if you go out and you find that hypothetical program at the University of California, Berkeley, that I mentioned, then we just make sure that you don't have, that your GPA is high enough, that you're not on probation, that you don't have a major credit deficit, that you haven't had a serious academic misconduct. And then we we just approve the credits that you'll transfer. For the very few cases where Nazarbayev University pays your tuition to go to one of those programs. And again, mostly we don't. Mostly that's that's for for the students to figure out themselves. If we pay for it, then what it what it is, is that we do a a ranking. So we'll issue a call and we'll tell you what the criteria are. So for Wisconsin, for example, we look at participation in extracurriculars, we look at GPA. We certainly look at any history of academic misconduct and sometimes a letter of application. And then a committee will rank those. And basically, we just go through based on the the highest scoring applications. Some of the other, we do have a few other small programs that involve exchange that's kind of very specific purpose. So University of Tsukuba in Japan has a program specifically for students with particular academic interests. So in those cases, we would look at, do you have those interests? And if it's a language one, there's one in Madrid, for example. And so we look at students who have also gotten good grades in Spanish, but for the most part, we're looking at your academic performance.
There's a follow up question. I think everybody's got the interest in the exchange program. And does the program applicable for mass majors as well?
So in, it will depend this year on what happens. Right now, like I say, it's not, we don't have anything planned. But every, every major would be eligible to apply for a university funded exchange program. So last year, I believe, for example, the humanities and social sciences students were eligible to go to Wisconsin and the natural sciences and math students were eligible to go to the university of New York at Buffalo. Buffalo, New York State University at Buffalo, State University of New York at Buffalo, SUNY Buffalo is what it's called, but it's a different university. But there are no majors who are left out of the the ability to to participate.
Okay, great. And the last question for any props. If students will be brought partially, what categories of students are in the first, second, and third?
I I can't make you any promises because it would go through a whole negotiation process where we'd get it approved and the the schools would negotiate with the provost and everything. But I'll tell you, my priorities are to see the the students who need lab access and the students who are first year students. Those are my 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 first group of students that I want to get on campus. I really want to get all of you here as soon as possible, but to do it safely.
Great, thanks. I assume there are no questions left. So far, we answered 47 questions, which I think is great in two hours. And also before thanking students, well, on behalf of all students and myself, I want to thank all Daniel Pugh, Philip Enz, and all the other panelists for attending, organizing, and as the comments is, we suggest students appreciate you, Dr. Enz, and other professors, and your willingness to coordinate with us and make concessions, which we really do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And thank you to all my colleagues who came and didn't have a chance to to talk to the students. I really appreciate that you all took two hours of your evening to be here with for this.
Great. We also thank all the students and thank you. If you have any questions, please, as as Sam pointed out, email the SHHS corporate email directly or to the school managers. Recording of today's meeting will be posted on the NU visit website or the SHHS website. Thank you, everybody. Bye. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, everybody.